Good evening, everyone, and welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks, home of the University of North Dakota. This is Grand Forks City Council's Committee to the whole from Monday, July 12th. Under item one called Order 1.1, welcome to roll call.
Wyble.
Here.
Docler.
Here.
Mop.
Here.
Kaboni.
Yep.
Sandy.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
Great. Under item two, discussion items, 2.1, request for ownership change, class one general on and off sale alcohol beverage license for Johnny's Lounge, doing business as Johnny's Lounge. Storieside, good evening.
All right, thank you. Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. So the item that you have before you, as President Sandy has stated, is an ownership change for a class one alcohol beverage license for Johnny's Lounge. Finance has received this ownership change request, which had been 100% owned by Virgil Vegan. Mr. Vegan has passed away, and ownership has been passed on to his daughter, Jeannie Vegan, for the 100% ownership. This does meet the, one of the exceptions. Ownership changes of more than 50% are considered a transfer unless it meets one of these exceptions. This case does meet that exception as it's passed down to a blood relative. In the first degree, city council approval is still required. So we would just ask for your approval to move this forward to city council.
Comments or questions?
Move.
Moved by Bean, seconded by Kaboni. Any other comments? There are none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. I'll just carry unanimously. Item 2.2, resolution authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds on behalf of Altru Health Systems. Storieside.
All right. President Sandy, members of the committee, this second item is in regards to the issuance of revenue bonds on behalf of Altru Health Systems. State statute does allow the city to issue revenue bonds for Altru, as it has done in the past under the North Dakota Municipal Industrial Development Act of 1955. There is no obligation to the city, no liability claim or any other charge against the city, as is stated in your staff report, and is also prescribed in the act as well as provided in the resolution. Mr. Douglas Arvin is the CFO of Altru and is here to give an update in regards to Altru, as well as Dr. Weiser is here and Dave Mollman for your questions. They are doing this for some interest savings with some favorable interest rates, as well as additional financing of their hospital. And from there, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Weiser.
Evening, Dr. Weiser.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the council, citizens in the room, Mayor Bocinski. Thanks for the opportunity to address you this evening. I'm Stephen Weiser, president of Altru Health System, accompanied by, as was said, Doug Arvin, our new CFO. He's been with us since November. We're here tonight to address the resolution authorizing issuance of revenue bonds on behalf of Altru Health System. Why hand it, Mike, over to Doug and he'll go through our presentation. I just like a couple of acknowledgements, and I think it's important. And then I'd like to give you a little bit of update of the good thing happened, the good things that are happening with our health system in our community of Grand Forks. One of the things that I really appreciate to acknowledge, President Sandy, is the council and the mayor and the leadership that you guys have executed over the last 18 months, which has been an extremely stressful trying time for the community, the region, our state. It's been our privilege as a health system to partner with you. I think the leadership you espoused by forming the institutional partners and all the key members of the community region, even invoking people from the state and others to participate and lead us through these challenging times was second to none. It set us apart as a community, as well as a region in our performance throughout the pandemic, as well as our getting back to normalcy. And it was been, it had been a privilege and an honor that Altru has been able to be part of that and partake in that. So we appreciate that collaboration and partnership. We're grateful, as a part of this community, to stand by ourselves, stand as your community health system. And that's what I want to share a little bit about our community health system. We see it's pivotal. The great healthcare is a core tenet of any community's success. It is key to the infrastructure of the city as it grows and attracts new businesses. We are committed to nothing short of establishing and being the premier health system in our state. We're well on to that journey as we've recovered and we've moved strongly forward post-pandemic. Want to share a few highlights of what's to come, and there are many more things to come over the next months and years in our future as a community integrated health system for the city of Grand Forks, East Grand Forks, as well as the region. While Doug's going to cover the particular details of the financial request today in front of you, which, you know, Todd so eloquently put in my ear, no pressure, it's kind of monumental how much we're asking for today, which Doug will cover that in more detail, no pressure. I want to just give a bit of a highlight, and we can take some questions at the end. But the hospital is intended to be seven floors, will be seventh floors. We will have the capacity to license up to 226 beds. It will also have a 16-bed observation unit off the emergency room. It will have a state-of-the-art emergency room trauma center to take care of all our citizens in our region and our community here. And it will have a state-of-the-art diagnostic and therapeutic platform, which will be located right above the emergency department. Currently where we're at, as we move through things, and things aren't happening fast enough for our citizens, we understand they want to see dirt moving and the steel go up. We have a lot of financing details that we're finishing through, and Doug will articulate those. We're also working with the state for approvals on final design. We've implemented some design, and we're finalizing those with relation to COVID and like conditions to deal with in the future, to really create a future-proof facility for the next 30 to 50 years. And it's pretty hard to forecast what your needs are, but I do feel with our collaboration with the entities and the experts, we feel like we're landing in that sphere. We recognize that this is a major investment for the community. We are vested to achieving that commitment and exceeding the expectations of our community, as well as our families. We are all consumers of healthcare. We deserve great healthcare. And great healthcare is a, is something that all of us as citizens want, close to home, locally controlled. The way healthcare is changing, it's a, it's an ever-evolving sphere, and the detractors will say that big organizations are the way to go to control costs. But what that comes as the expense of local control, and I'll touch a little bit about that when I talk about our regional work shortly. So we are committed, and we feel that having great local healthcare allows you to track the businesses, develop the businesses, and bring in new innovative and new technologies to the community. When they have, you can get the talented people who want to move here and know that things they don't have to worry about, which is outstanding healthcare, are well taken care of. The new hospital is the pillar of that commitment. Within the last couple of weeks, we announced a joint partnership with Encompass Health, and it didn't get a lot of media attention, but I want to talk a little bit about that, because it is a testimony to our ability to be innovative and committed to excellence in healthcare. Encompass is a nationally renowned rehabilitation facility, and they've partnered throughout with very big organizations throughout the U.S. We are now bringing them into our state. The purpose of rehabilitation measures is take people from traumatic illnesses, like just traumatic brain injuries, spinal injuries, spinal cord type injuries, orthopedic rehabilitation, cardiovascular rehabilitation, stroke rehabilitation, and return them faster to function. By partnering with the expert in this, who understand this business, my Lou and efficiencies, we're going to be able to expand to 40 beds, and we are going to be the premier destination for rehab in our state, as well as our region. And that's what our commitment and our strategy behind that was. Within the region, there's been news out that we've talked with the city of Devil's Lake, but we've also talked with the cities of Warroad, of Roseau, you know, Crookston, all the smaller communities around us, even the Warrens and Graftons. We believe that local healthcare is imperative to their own community's success and their sustenance. And if they have great local care that's supported by an expert regional authority, which we believe in the state alone, we represent that true type of partnership model, we will keep those cities viable, their ability to track citizens. Those same citizens will travel to work or participate in business in their local regional areas like Grand Forks, and just be stronger all along. We see it as a key impetus to our growth strategy, as well as maintaining our footprint as a true regional integrator of healthcare. These were just a few summaries of where we're at right now. We've come through a very challenging year, but we've came through it as an innovator, and stronger operationally and financially than we've been in many, many years. We will maintain that commitment going forward. We will have more things to share with you as time goes on and months and years go on, of the great innovation we will commit to, to providing world-class care in this region. President Sandy, council members, fellow citizens, and mayor, thank you for these few minutes to share about our health system. I'm going to ask Doug if he'll step forward and talk you through our bond issuance tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you today.
Thank you, Dr. Weiser. Mr. Arvin, good evening.
Yes, sir. Well, first of all, thanks to the council, to President Sandy, to Mayor Bocinski, and all those in attendance tonight who are interested in Grand Forks in this region. It really is an honor to come and speak about our hospital, health system, and the plans we have, and to answer any questions that you might have about that. I'd like to start also with a little bit about the financial position of Altru, and the operational improvements that have occurred over the past couple of years. We're actually running very well positioned for a new project like this, as well as the market itself is well positioned for us to take advantage of historically low cost of capital, and some opportunities to refinance some existing debt in our organization, which creates more opportunity for us to be able to look at a project like this. We've seen consistent improvement throughout fiscal year '20 and '21 as well, so over 18-month period of time. I'd attribute that significantly to the teamwork that's existed within Altru, and the community support as well, that have been great for the organization. And we also, you know, wouldn't say that the pandemic is behind us, but the height of it hopefully is behind us. And we are seeing significant returns of patient volumes back to the organization for elective care, for procedural care, you know, back to the emergency room. Patients are, we're seeing higher levels of activity, and so that, you know, somewhat normalcy returning to the health system. And that's good for us financially. We don't want to see sick people, but when they are in need of care, we want them to be able to select Altru Health System as their preferred, preferred healthcare system. One of the things I think this investment provides for us is continued opportunity for growth, for job growth, and for growth in research and education throughout the region, that will benefit the citizens and our patients tremendously, and again, the economy tremendously as well. So with the growth, again, there'll be opportunities for increased hiring as we go forward. Some of the key metrics I'd like to mention, and I know these are, they may be a little obtuse in terms of what they mean, but they're significant for the organization. We're operating at a 5.2% operating margin this year. Our cash flow margin is above 10%. From a comparison perspective, that would put us in the top quartile of performers in the health, across healthcare systems in the United States today. So solid improvement, and we expect that to continue. The organization and the teamwork that we've seen, I would attribute to long-term sustainability and continued performance improvement. In fact, we have a multimillion-dollar ongoing performance improvement initiative in the organization that will not only continue to achieve these margins, but actually help us improve over time. And these are ideas around waste improvement and efficiency in the organization, just best practices overall. So they're going to help us as we go forward. Our liquidity in the organization, again, has improved significantly. If you look back at 2019, we were at 136.8 days, or 135.8 days of days' cash on hand. What that is is kind of our cushion in the marketplace in terms of being able to afford unexpected downturns in the market, or things that might, like a pandemic that might surprise us. And today, that's over 200 days' cash on hand. From a, for someone who's done healthcare finance for over a quarter century, that's dramatic improvement. And so the number may be kind of, kind of nebulous in terms of what it means, but what it tells us, what it tells me, and what it tells our organization, my colleagues, is that we're well positioned to do more in terms of investment in ourself, investment in our future. So we're very thankful for that. As I think I mentioned also, you know, these metrics, again, we're rated on a credit rating, just like any other organization or individual is. And so today, many of our performance indicators are what we call a-rating performance, which would be top-class performance. Some would have opportunity for continued improvement, but all are investment-grade. And so again, that puts us in a good position to move forward with a project like this. We talked a little bit about, and we'll talk a little more about that, the favorable bond market overall, and, and the cost of capital, again, being at historically low costs, interest rates. And so we want to take advantage of that at this time to be able to continue to grow our organization. So we'll go ahead and jump into the slides here and talk you through some of the specifics, but I just wanted to address those at kind of a higher level, what we're looking at today. So try not to read through these, but again, I want to take the time necessary to go through the, through the information. And I know Maureen did a great job of, of talking about the city's obligation here, but I would want to reiterate, the city will technically issue the debt, but it's payable and pledged from the assets and revenue of Altru Health System. That comes from the North Dakota Municipal Act of 1955. But again, from a taxpayer perspective, there's no obligation that's incurred by the taxpayers for this debt. It's a conduit for the issuance of the debt. The city assigns all responsibilities to a trustee to monitor the debt on behalf of the bondholders. And the city maintains protection, including indemnification of any future actions or expenses related to this obligation. The trustee would be U.S. Bank, or they have historically been the trustee, and their role is to collect the semi-annual interest payments from Altru Health System, and the annual principal payments as well, and to make sure those are repaid to bondholders, which generally are investment, investment companies or funds that are interested in, in this type of portfolio. The trustee will then, of course, notify the city of any major events regarding the bonds, including violation of covenants, which we expect none to occur, but that's their role with the city. So overall, again, I want to be very clear with this information, the use of the proceeds, it's a large number, $530 million. But as you break it down, I think it's important to understand the components of that. A significant portion of the 530 is refinancing of existing debt. That's $170 million. And why that's so important to us is it gives us a chance to appropriately look at the amortization of the debt obligation to match the assets of the new health, the replacement hospital, and to create $18.5 million, it says 18.5, which is $18.5 million worth of savings back to the organization. So it's a tremendous financial opportunity for us to take advantage of. It also gives us a chance to, just like with any other debt, there are certain covenants or requirements that, that the health system would have. This gives us a chance to make those more consistent and less administratively burdened. When you have multiple debt obligations, you have to, each one can be of its own in terms of covenants and requirements, and so we want to streamline those. The bulk of the number is $330 million, which relates to the project that Stephen Weiser just described, the seven-story acute care hospital, the demolition, demolition of the existing hospital, improved parking capacity, and then we pay issuance costs of the debt, about three and a half million dollars would be out of that total, and that includes every person who's involved legally, legal representation, our underwriters, any financial advisors would come out of those dollars that reimburse related to the project. And also, we're asking for consideration of a $30 million amount for capitalized interest, and what this would mean. We're not finalized on this at this point, but we are asking for support for it as we look at the final needs of the, of the organization. It gives us the opportunity during the construction phase to, to borrow up to that amount of money that would serve as principal and interest during that period of time. Again, I would describe these all as worst-case scenarios in terms of total costs, but we want to bring today that number to the organization. So again, breaking out a significant amount related to refunding of existing debt, that creates significant savings back to the organization, the replacement hospital, and then the capitalized interest fund, which would equal the, the total that we're requesting. Just to reiterate, the, there's no practical risk to the city. They act as a conduit issuer of the bonds. Altru is, is the obligated party for the, for the debt, and the bondholders have no recourse to the city or its taxpayers. The offering documents, the legal documents make it clear that the bonds will be paid solely from the revenue and assets of Altru Health System. In fact, the new hospital will be the primary pledge for the, for the investment. And again, no taxpayer funds will be used to pay debt or defend any legal activity related to the bonds. So Altru Health System will indemnify the city for any legal costs that we would not anticipate, but should that occur in the future. The city assigns all responsibilities, as noted, to a trustee to monitor the debt on behalf of the bondholders, and again, to maintain certain protections, including indemnification and future actions or expenses. And the city can request information from the trustee at any time regarding the status of the payments and compliance with the covenants. So why finance now, I think we probably talked a little bit about that, but we'll just reiterate a few additional points. I think we might have mentioned historic low cost of capital, and so I'll start with that. The 30-year money market rate at 1.44. The credit spreads are very low, so even lower investment rating debt is, has a minimal spread in terms of the short term to the long term. And we expect the cost of capital to be in the low 3% on a tax-exempt basis, so that's significant savings for us. For example, comparing one of the obligations that we're refinancing, that was closer to 5%. And again, that was reflective of the time, it's not, not a note of, back in 2012, but significant opportunities for savings for us. Today, as we study the market, bond funds have significant cash balances or equity. They're looking for investments to make in this, in this area. The reduced supply of tax-exempt bonds is increasing competition, so we think, again, that'll help drive the cost of the bonds down. And the reduction, this reduction in supply and increased demand gives the borrower, in this case us, significant leverage opportunity, makes it flexibility in the structure, and to minimize covenant restrictions as we go forward. So again, thank you for your time tonight. It really is important to us and important to the region. I wanted to mention again, as, as Dr. Weiser had noted, it's not in my slides, but this really is about the patients and the community that we represent. We're committed to the best in classing care in this community, the best in education, the best in research, and throughout the region, best work environment for our employees, and that's really what we're after tonight, to be able to support that. So we're happy to take any questions that you have at this point. I know this isn't the, the final meeting for discussion, but we wanted to make sure we had the basics out tonight. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Arvin. Any comments or questions? Mr. Bean?
Yes, sir.
If I could, a couple. Do you still maintain the relationship with Mayo that we've had?
Yes.
Could you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, probably my colleague could do the best of that, but I can tell you that it's certainly a great opportunity for us from clinical collaboration and just for our patients and the flow back and forth between the Mayo system. I think Dr. Weiser would probably be the best to give you a full response on that.
I don't know what the best, because the person who brought Mayo here is sitting over here, him and Dr. Ryan, a few, you know, 10 years ago, 11, 10 and a half. Mayo Clinic, as you know, is the world's best health system. They're also the number one in outcomes, care delivery, coordination care, consumer experience. They set the tone. They're a monumental organization, and we have the ability and the pleasure of being part of the Mayo Clinical Care Network. So to answer Councilman Bean's question, we still have a strong collaborative. In fact, we celebrated our anniversary with them recently. What that brings to the community is a, a level of additional support and care that goes to the next level. Our intent is not to replace Mayo Clinic's role as a quaternary health system that has the specialists of all specialists that you need, but by having that direct lineage and that tied relationship, we have rapid access to world-class questions and answers and therapeutics. And I would highlight, part of that collaboration during the pandemic, which we're extremely proud of, was the fact that they reached out to us when the convalescent which we're extremely proud of, was the fact that they reached out to us when the convalescent plasma was just being talked about. You know, an organization in Houston, Texas, that was collaborating with Johns Hopkins, and the Mayo is always involved in stuff, and they reached out, "Do you want to be a regional participant in this?" And we were the first in our state, one of the first nationally, I think it was in the top 20 adosers given to give to that citizen, or fellow citizen in our region up in Roseau, who had a full recovery convalescent plasma. So there are many things to be gained by Mayo, how to run an enterprise, how to ensure high reliability, and we utilize all those tools through that relationship with them. And it's something we will continue to go in forward. They want our success. You know, I mean, it's important. It's a competitive landscape, but they want Altru Health System to be successful. They enjoy that collaborative work that we do with them every day, so.
Yes, Mr. Veen?
Certainly, follow-up.
This one may be a little bit more technical, but what's the average age of plant?
That's a good question. So we're, on a normalized basis, we're going to be in the 11- to 12-years age of plant. So it's kind of a, I think the technical answer is kind of an accounting-oriented question. So we're a little bit older than the, you know, where a median hospital or health system would be.
With the construction timeline, I would going to say that's going to change significantly, would you? Is that right?
That's absolutely right.
What is the construction timeline?
Well, we are expected to be completing mid-2024, is what we would expect.
Are you starting this fall?
Yes, October. And the envelope will take about nine to 12 months, which means the outside shell being completed from the stage we're at. We're approximately 18% of completion to this point, and then the rest of the time, we'll be spending outfitting the internals. So we're looking at mid-2024. By the time we take down the other hospital, depending on the time of year, the weather and the conditions, and the take-down of the full hospital, we'll be able to operate in 2024, but the full hospital in front of us, which we currently reside in, probably won't come down based if it's in the middle of winter or austere weather, so.
And maybe, could you talk about with the hospital, what impacts it will have on efficiencies and staffing?
Sure. There are many efficiencies to be gained, and we suffer through an older plant and an older building that dates back to approximately '75. So we have humidity issues. We have temperature control issues on a regular basis that we've, you know, just put in some electrical switch-overs to update our system as it currently in place. Moving into a new facility is going to allow us to have very efficient operating rooms, sized operating rooms, to take care of the patients more effectively with the new equipment and technologies that we have in place, such as robots. It is really a night-and-day from a facilities guidelines perspective of what the new operative and procedural spaces look like. I encourage people who have interest to go visit even just some of the smaller communities around us that feed into us with new hospitals like Grafton, and to see what they have in a small facility, and they only have one of them, to see that we're going to have 11 of those, and be able to partake and provide care at just a higher, more effective level. Now, in terms of efficiencies for nursing and flow, the way the wards are going to be designed is that minimum movement, more efficiencies in terms of tube systems, more efficiencies for sectorized nursing, so that the number of steps they take in a day, the number of, the access to medications and delivery of medications is far more efficient. So overall, the bedside time for patients will be increased, and the nurses will work directly in line with their patients that they're addressed to. So we use the analogy to use for what efficiencies are gained in new buildings would probably be similar to the lean or Toyota production model, which is, you know, more efficiencies, less work, and more, you know, and from an operations cost, we all know how much more efficient a new house built versus a house like mine that's 30 years old runs in terms of keeping it cool and the water running and all that stuff. So we're just at a dated structure, and if we're going to be the, and we will be the premier health system, we need the tools to be able to deliver that care and track the talent. It's the other part that's equally important. While I'm extremely proud to say we've recruited 80-plus physicians in the last three years, they, these are cutting-edge docs who want the best technology, the best space to work, and this further solidifies our positioning to be able to keep attracting that talent. And that same talent that you're attracting, they're going to come to the university to do research, attract the businesses, and the biotech companies that want to come here and collaborate with health systems like ours doing state-of-the-art cancer therapeutics, heart and vascular care, et cetera, so.
Just one last, where do you see physician growth being? Where are you at today, and where do you expect it to be?
Physician growth? Well, I would, you know, I'm proud to say right now, our service lines are extremely well outfitted. We have very few gaps, which two years ago, I couldn't stand here in front of you and say, "We have the best of this, the best of that." We have outstanding cardiovascular, EP, interventional, non-structural heart program, where we do valves through the groin now, which we never did two years ago. We have outstanding robotics for joint replacement with outstanding results, led by Dr. Jeremy Gardner. There's very few areas that we left. And in fact, you know, if you go across the state and you ask about the neurosurgical team that we have here, led by, you know, John Eichmann, along with Dr. Manaski and Dr. Darko, we are regarded as probably having the strong team. Now, two years ago, I couldn't stand in front of you and say that. So we are, and when you build and you have that type of character, and I can go on and on, and whatever specialty you want to talk, it's easier to recruit people to come in there. And so it's inspiring them for their coming, you know, and Grand Forks needs to grow, and we're doing our part to get the right talent, to make sure people don't think about healthcare second. And what Mayo plays for us, we expect to handle everything up until the point you need a Mayo. So when you're going to do transplants, that's Mayo. We're not going to do advanced lung, you know, patients that we can't manage. Mayo is there for that, but that's really what they want to be here. We want to be the destination in this area and region. And you know honestly, post-telemedicine, post-pandemic, telemedicine tells your range. So a little story, I had some trees being worked on by a kid who drove through my neighborhood, who was here to see his dad, who was really sick, being taken care of by Dr. Wijatanga, who's our EP doctor, who does advanced heart failure, biventricular devices. And that fellow came all the way from Duluth for that care. There were people, though, come all over the state, as well as Minnesota, from Montana, South Dakota, to seek care. We will be this destination for that, because we're going to have that kind of level of quality, and we already do have it. It's a secret. We don't get to tell much, but I'm proud to stand here and talk about it all day, so.
Thank you. Mr. Weber?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, President Sandy. There's been mentioned that it'll cost $330 million to finish the hospital. What is the cost of the new hospital?
Yeah, so our project control budget at this point is estimated $380 million. We're continuing to work on that number and, you know, refine that, which I expect to come down, but that's the project budget at this point.
Very good. And that's 226 beds, plus the trauma and diagnostic centers. What's the current bed count at Altru?
Well, if you're going to, it's going to run at around 275 right now, total. During pandemic, we would be, and that's including non-licensed beds, that's factoring in the south campus rehab beds. This new 226 capacity does not factor in those. Those are all separate from that. So I would say there's a decrease in total bed count, and that's for a good reason. In fact, when we open, it won't be at 226. We'll have two-shelled floors. That's in our plan. The movement in medicine is very aggressive, and we will be having patients stay far shorter than they ever had over the next five to 10 years. So you're going to come in for something, and hopefully you don't have to come in very often, but you have been normally safe for four or five days. You're going to stay for two days, maybe one and a half. You're going to go home, and you're going to have care at home. That's called the hospital-at-home model that Medicare is pushing forward, that we're already working on as innovators, not just working on here locally, but working on in the region. And one of the strategies we invoked during the region as we were reaching surge was to offload patients. So they come in from the region critically ill. We stabilize them. We send them back, and they're cared for in their facility, and that opens another bed for the next sick patient from our community or the region. So that's modeling that we're working towards. Now, the reason they have the excess capacity, if you ask me why we have two-shelled med surge force, is to create redundancy, because we don't know what's happening with the critical care, critical access facilities in our state. A lot of those communities are building hospitals, but I don't forecast we have 100-plus hospitals in our state five, 10, 15, 20 years from now, and the regional centers like ours are going to need to be able to absorb extra capacity when those situations happen. It is just the reality of where healthcare is going. I do see that we'll have plenty of critical facilities, but not to the number they exist, but don't ask me to posit what that would look like. So we're future-proofing, is what we're saying as well, so.
Thanks. And thanks also for the earlier comments about the importance of having a locally owned and controlled hospital. I think that message needs to be repeated all the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? Is there, Ms. Thorsted, did you have a comment?
The request that's before you then for action would be to approve the resolution that's attached to your staff report, as well as to set the public hearing for August 16th at 5:30 in city council chambers.
Move by Veen. Sir, second. Second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And thank you for all the leadership at Altru. Certainly, I think Dr. Walz deserves a shout-out for what he's done over the last 18 months. Whether I agree with his opinion or not, I really appreciate his leadership in everything that he did for our community. The guy worked very, very hard. And certainly, as someone who's been doctoring a lot with a family member, I think most importantly, you know, saying thanks to all the physicians and all the nursing and all the staff that are working at Altru, working very hard. They treat us very, very well, and I really appreciate everything that they do, so. Moving right along, item 2.3, appointment, reappointments to various committees and commissions, appointments to planning and zoning commission, and reappointments to historic preservation. Is there any comments about the appointments, or Mr. Veen? Moved for all appointments, second by Cavami. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Excellent. Item 2.4, budget amendments, Health
Department, Part A, COVID-19 vaccinations, and B, health equity planning. Ms. Swanson, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the council. I have before you two new budget amendments. They are both from the same notice-of-grant award from the North Dakota Department of Health, but they will fund two separate projects, and we are separating them for budget purposes within the city of Grand Forks for better monitoring and tracking. The first one is to increase COVID-19 vaccinations. We have already submitted our plan to the state, and it has been approved, so the outreach efforts that are ongoing right now are the types of activities that will be funded. I am requesting that we amend the budget just for the portion that we will need for the remainder of 2021, not the entire budget that has been allocated to us, which is $1,109,000. That will last through 2023. The second, and then the support materials are included as well. And then the second one, which is the same notice-of-grant award, but once again, it will be a different budget effort. This particular one is a little bit different. This is for a health equity planning process. It's to write a strategic plan for health equity for Grand Forks County. We have identified an individual within our existing staff who will be willing to carry out this work with community partners, and we are requesting to amend the budget just for $50,000 for the remainder of this year, with $75,000 allocated for next year for continued planning and then implementation of efforts. And I would be happy to answer any questions on either of these budget amendments, should you have any.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Weber?
I'll move approval for both amendments.
Move by Weber, second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 2.5, plans and specs for Project 8373, English Cooley diversion and erosion repairs. Good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy. Thank you, committee members. This project is requesting approval of plans and specifications for a small repair project on our English Cooley diversion. The diversion runs along 69th Street, west of Grand Forks, and then north of the city, and it diverts rural water runoff from flooding the English Cooley essentially. So it is built by the Corps of Engineers, but the city has responsibility to maintain it. And due to the natural flow of water, we have some erosion that's occurred in three areas, and we'd like to fix that this year. So we're requesting a project to repair some of the side slope and armor it up with riprap, so we prevent feature erosion in those areas. The current estimated construction cost is $175,000, of which we have $200,000 budgeted in Fund 4154, the flood protection capital maintenance fund. If approved, our intent is to start this work this fall, and hopefully finish it this fall, or go into winter if necessary.
Any questions for Mr. Lieberman? Mr. Weber moves approval, second by Cavami. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.6, create district for
Project 8388, District Number 27, 8th Avenue North sidewalks from North 53rd to 55th Street. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you again. This project, this proposed project, will construct sidewalk and ADA ramps along 8th Avenue North, from North 55th Street to North 53rd Street. This section of sidewalk previously met city council this past winter. It was on our list of sidewalks that were incorporated in our annual sidewalk contract. We took a look at this neighborhood and looking at our current special assessment policy. This is kind of a unique neighborhood, where 8th Avenue North is the only east-west route through this neighborhood. It almost functions as a collector street, or a classified street would compared to a local street. So what we're requesting tonight is to create a district, so we can discuss this unique situation with the special assessment commission and bring a recommendation forward. We believe it may warrant an exception to current policy, and we'd like to discuss that with them. The current estimate for this, this construction is roughly $46,000. Our intent would be to accomplish that work this year.
Any questions for Mr. Lieberman? Mr. Cavami?
Move approval.
Moves approval, second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Item 2.7, preliminary engineering agreement for Project 8368, rehab of Demers Avenue overpass and Washington Street pedestrian underpass. Mr. Grasser, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of city council. This is an agreement with the North Dakota DOT. It's become pretty standard here of late. This is going to be a regionally funded, both of these are on the regional systems. They're using regional dollars, and under those programs, they ask us to do a preliminary engineering reimbursement agreement. The projects are basically going to consist of, again, working on the Skyway. Both projects are basically spa repair, some foundation repair, some of those miscellaneous repair-type items. The pedestrian underpass we're talking about, if you remember, is the one just off of 24th Avenue South on Washington Street. They're doing both projects together, both the engineering, and then when they do the bidding, that'll all be done basically as one project. Cost estimate is $800,000, again, combined. Because it's on a regional road system, the city shares 10%, so we're looking at about $80,000 local share total, and it is planned to be a 2022 project construction activity.
10%, seems like a good deal. Any comments? Mr. Weber moves approval. Sir, second? Second by Veen. Mr. Veen, you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Grasser, I know they talked about moving the project up faster than originally planned. That was due to inspections. Is that right?
They didn't, I'm not aware exactly what triggered that. I think it was more availability of local funds than it was anything. You know, they're moving it up kind of basically one, a lot of it was like a one-year, a one-year shift. They're bringing it in together. The pedestrian underpass was something they brought in that was newer. The Skyway had been in the queue to get redone, but I think some of the COVID dollars that had been flowing through the state had made some funding available. They decided to take advantage of that.
Mr. Grasser, didn't we do a relatively major overhaul of the Demers Avenue overpass within the last five, six years?
It's in that timeframe, a little longer than, this is going to be doing some work that wasn't, that was mainly decking-related activity. The stuff that they're doing now is going to be more like in the foundation and the underside. They may be doing a little bit of work on the They may be doing a little bit of work on, on, on the upper, but, but it's not going to be like a redecking activity that we had just got done.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.8, plans and specs for Project Number 8380, Columbia Road overpass north pedestrian joint repair. Mr. Grasser?
Yeah, unfortunately, we've had a string of activities over the years here on the Columbia Road overpass. If you remember, just a year or two ago here, we were dealing with the, the expansion teeth on the main drive lanes, and that ended up, again, being relatively costly, emergency-type work. And now we are faced also with the pedestrian piece there where the bike path is on the west side of the, of the overpass. And same thing, the, the bridge expanded so much that the, some of the materials, if you look at the, at the pictures, one plate slides above the other, they bottomed out, and they, they tipped the other one up, broke some of the abutment, the concrete. And so again, that gets to be very expensive type work. They gotta remove the concrete, but leave the steel in there so they can go back in and reconnect everything. We're evaluating right now whether the, the delivery date on the actual steel plates themselves, that tends to drive the timeline on, on a number of these projects. I'd like to, I'd like to put it back brand-new, but if it's like the, the teeth that we had last time, you know, that would have, if we waited for the new material to arrive, it would have taken us another three or four months to get the work done. And of course, it's always happening when UND is in session and demand is high, so we'll see what, we'll see what that brings. The intent right now is to, is to, is to get that work done yet this fall. We are anticipating about $150,000 cost estimate. Interstate Engineering has been doing the design activities. If you recall, we hired them a few weeks back to do that design work. They've typically done the work on the bridge and the overpass for us. So we're looking at an August 9th committee of the whole to see this again, and again, the work should be done this fall.
Thank you, Mr. Grasser. Any comments?
Move approval.
Mr. Cavami moves approval. Second by Mock. Mr. Weber, question?
How much of that 150 is, is ours? Is that all ours? We have to cover all of that.
It's all ours. We're responsible for all the maintenance activities on the, on the structure.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Veen?
How often do they do bridge inspections?
Bridge inspections, I'm trying, I think they are now doing them every third year, if I remember right. They were every other year, but I think they, they stretched that one just a little bit. And a lot of this stuff would necessarily show up on a bridge inspection activity unless it happens to be on a really, really hot day when they see everything bottoming out.
I, I just know previously, we had problems with the bearings when it had
Yep.
... expansion, and those are all working well now?
Those are working, we actually have, the, the whole overpass is due, I'm trying to remember, 25 or 26 is basically due for a major overhaul. We're going to get into the bearings and all, all of that activity, repainting, potentially some redecking. So we're going to have a major project in there in 2026. That'll be the first really major encompassing rehab work on the bridge since it was built.
Any other questions? We don't have a whole lot of choice here. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Grasser. Item 2.9, proposals for Project 8327, recycling services. Mr. Phelan?
Greta, I would like to put this full screen here, if you can help me out.
I know what I'm doing.
John?
I got it right there.
There we go. He was hiding. Hey, Council President Sandy and members of the community hall, if I could introduce a few folks, this has been a kind of a fun project. Normally, recycling's not a lot of fun because it brings itself with a lot of controversy, but I want to introduce some folks. Lee Ray Amundson, who was our former Public Works Operations Director, left, so I've been helping to lead this greater team, and so I've really been, really been pleased with all the great folks I've been able to work with. So we've been working with Nick Blackwall, who's in the back here, Greta Seleski, and Spencer Halverson. We've been working together, and, and Nick works in Public Works Operations, and, and you know Greta and Spencer working as part of the city administration, and then also Grayson Cole is in the back there too, and she's one of our UND city interns, so we've really integrated her into this process too. So it's really been a team from a city. Also, I want to introduce some folks. I think next year, we're going to have the Snissler College of Business and Public Administration completed. We're going to have this exciting first floor space for the, the community. We'll call the city of Grand Forks and the broader community with our Workforce Development Center and all things Grand Forks community, or we're going to be the first floor. And one of the reasons why we really invested in that is that we were going to be near the Institute of Policy and Business Analytics, and, and tonight we have with us Jason Jensen and Cordell Fontaine and, and David Flannan. And so really, one of our goals was, as we become more, make more informed public policy decisions, is that we would be engaging them in a variety of different ways. And I think once we have our space there, we'll be doing even more, whether it's research, internships, workforce development, or even these kind of analytical kind of things, we'll be doing more and more. So we wanted to kind of have a first out, really try and engage UND in, in more of that. And then also Burns McDonald. Burns McDonald has been our longtime consultant and has helped us through a lot of challenging issues with landfill development and that sort of thing. So really, that's been the team that working on that, and I'm really pleased to, to be part of that team. We're going to present, I'm going to present kind of this recycling, just give you a matter of proportionality. The sanitation enterprise fund is an $11 million-plus enterprise for the city of Grand Forks, so most of the investment we have in the sanitation enterprise fund is in collections and in landfill. And so this agreement that we're talking about today is probably in that $850,000 range, so it's about 6% of the entire budget. So it's a smaller piece of a bigger, bigger hole that we have as part of our budget. And similar to when Alter was up here, probably the, the next closest thing we can say in this community that we serve in a regional basis is probably our landfill. And so we serve a large section of northeast North Dakota and northwest Minnesota. We accept about 100,000 tons of materials from inert to solid waste to ag, and so we run a pretty large operation from all that perspective from a large area. And so we do a lot of day-to-day service, and we prevent a lot of bad days by having a solid waste landfill throughout this region, so we should be very thankful that we have this really terrific investment in our, in our community. With that, I also want to say, as part of the landfill, we're, we're updating our landfill permit. We were permitted in 2007 and '08, and we're up for another five-year landfill permit upgrade. One of, one of the criteria that we have is that we'll do the best we can. We have a goal of trying to divert 40% from our solid waste landfill to preserve as much capacity as possible, and so that was one of the commitments we have. I did know we're at about 35%, 35, 36%. So we've been doing pretty well diverting materials that are not landfilled, and that's not only recyclable, but it's woody waste, it's, it's grass, it's a variety of things that we divert from our landfill and more beneficially reuse it so that we're not using up a lot of our air space in our landfill. So with that context, this recycling is a, is a smaller part of a greater whole, but it's really important part of our, our integrated strategy as we move forward. So this evening, I'm going to let you know, and I looked at this timeframe, and a lot of times when you look at timeframes and you look back on it, hey, we're on schedule, and that doesn't happen all the time. So we were last with you in early May, and we were talking about the RFP that we were going to move forward with. We were discussing with you, doing a variety of different menu options and then getting some numbers back. We also discussed having some survey results, and so you had a better understanding of how, what the people of Grand Forks were thinking as we moved. Tonight, I want to kind of go over kind of where we're at with that. First off, I want to talk about the survey, and we did a, a self-selected survey through Greta, and Grayson really led that portion of it, so we did something ourselves, self-selected, but then we also thought, let's go to the next level and do a scientific survey. And that's where we reached out to the Snissler College and to do a, a scientific survey. So that's essentially what we've been doing over the last couple, couple of months, and we've gotten some findings back for you, and I think they're generally in line. So what we found on both the online survey and the scientific survey is citizens of Grand Forks are generally satisfied with the current service level of recycling. And the scientific survey provided 62%, and in a similar rate, the online was 69%, and that's really a self-selected. The thing I'm most proud about is the garbage in this, where we asked, well, how do people feel about what we do as our own, with our own sanitation public workforces? And, and that's where the scientific, we're over 90%. And so when you can say you're over 90% supported, I want to give a huge shout-out to our operations that, you know, collect the garbage week to week, do spring cleanup, pick up leaves. I think that's a lot of the satisfaction that we're, we're getting about what our crews do year to year. The other thing we, we talked about, you know, would people want a 90-gallon container to make things easier? And of course, the answer was positive in, in both veins. We also asked, and last night we heard, you know, Mayor Bochensky really wanted to push this, you know, let's try to look at an opt-in and opt, or an opt-out process where you have to sign in to do it. And so we did do that, and we saw less positive response on the online survey, but on the scientific survey, it was a 50/50 that people were for, kind of that opt-in and opt-out, where it's just not citywide, okay? But then we wanted to go, and we wanted to do, at least look at the economics and the price sensitivity. And what we found is that, and generally, when we get over $5 per month, people are going to, they're not going to opt-in as part of the survey. So we wanted to see, yeah, I'm all for it, but up to what amount? And we found probably beyond that $5 to $6, a lot of people aren't going to opt in on that. And that was really with both the online and the scientific survey, so trying to find out what people are willing to pay. The other thing we found is, if you recall, we were here, there were two items that had, we were here, I think as we saw the daylight was coming out of this pandemic, and some of the materials were going up in value. Certain plastics, cardboard, paper, those sorts of things were going up in, in value. There were two areas that had zero value, and one was glass, and the other one was varieties of plastics that didn't have value, like a tight container of plastic has a lot of value, a yogurt container has no value, okay? So we thought, most people, we, when we surveyed, and if, if these items, like the glass and the non-valued plastic, if we told them, there's no economic value in this, do you still want us to collect it? We figured, I figured they'd say, no, don't, it seems like a waste of time. So what we found on both the online and the scientific is that people do want that picked up, and they weren't, you know, while they're there, they, they would prefer to, you know, throw their glass in the container, even if it doesn't have value, and makes them feel positive and, for whatever reason, right? I think that is probably good, because when you look at the proposal that we got from Waste Management, there's no cost difference in it, and there's probably kind of an irritation trying to remove glass, and it's, at some point, let a facility in Minneapolis sort out the, the different varieties of plastic and the different varieties of glass and whatever else. So that was an interesting finding, we thought. So we did move forward with the RFP, trying to get at a variety of different cost responses. We, we started in the end of May, and then at the end of June, we did receive proposals. We're here with you this evening on, on the Committee of the Hall on the 12th, and hopefully for, on July 19th, we go to award to the particular vendor. Council President Sandy asked me earlier today, what we're asking for today is that you accept the proposals, the proposal of Waste Management with the recommended service levels that we request. Then we will work with Mr. Gostad in his office, in the city attorney's office, and we'll embed on those costs and those service selections into it in agreement, and we'll bring that back to, for, for approval. But what we want to know is that you agree with the service levels and the contractor, and then we can bring that back as, as part of an agreement, probably within the next few weeks. In a similar vein, when you approve a TIF project with a certain tax incentive, generally we bring back a development agreement with all those specifics in, in a similar vein. So here are the proposals, and in green is what we're asking to move forward with, and the citywide collection via manual collection, and that's what we do currently. And that's at a dollar amount of $3.35 per month, and that's our current rate. So the proposal is to, to continue to move forward with a similar service level at the same rate moving forward. We did as part of the RFP, as, if you want to ask about, we, we looked at up to a five to seven-year agreement, we'll probably bring back a five-year agreement, but in the years two through five, we've suggested in that RFP is that we would increase it per the Midwest CPI. It would be how we would increase it. Waste Management provided an alternative strategy of 3.5% over those same time, same time periods. When we, we put the proposal together as part of the agreement, we would probably put in our Midwest CPI. All the others surrounding, remaining two through six, we're all going to automate it or fully automated, doing opt-in, opt-out. And you can see as you look forward, whether it's, carts included or carts not included, they all range from, you know, over $5 to up to $10 as we move forward. And just because we move forward with kind of keeping on with the status quo, doesn't mean we can't migrate to something of a higher service level. Say, for instance, suddenly, we're able to get a grant where we receive free containers or something. We can always look at a different service level, but for right now, with what we know coming out of this pandemic, let's just kind of keep on doing what we're doing, is the, is the particular recommendation. There's also a variety of other service levels that we have. Multifamily is a $1.57 per unit, and that's 13 cents less than what we're currently paying. The other one was small business, and that's $19.75 per unit, and that's 13 cents less too in that case. We do have drop sites, and we just collapse this into all of our drop sites. We have three major drop sites with all different kinds of recyclables, Public Works Facility, CVS, Hugo's, and then finally, the South End Valley Dairy. And then we have some paper recycling areas at a variety of Hugo stores. So if you all tall that up with the Waste Management proposals, $8,305, that's $573 less than the current agreement. That was the one area where Countrywide Sanitation did submit a proposal. They didn't, they did not submit a proposal on any of the other curb site collection activities. And so we took their proposal, and then we averaged out, they had a return on investment with materials that they collect, and even at that, they're, they're a higher bidder than the Waste Management in $447 more than we're paying currently. Again, the key strengths of the Waste Management, it does provide the full scope of what we asked for. They, they have identified, I think, if you ask Waste Management, they, they're hopeful that we would go with an automated system, but I think at the cost per unit value that we have, it's just more than what we anticipated. There is some concern with some people that have large containers, and, and certainly when they, when the recycling truck comes by with the operator, that individual has to pick that container up and put it in. So I think some, certain people have gotten to a larger, larger container, so there's concern of that. So we may have to do some customer things with people that, that's too large of a container, it's fine if it was an automated system, but a man or woman operator that's coming by is going to have a hard time lifting that, and it's not a really helpful thing. So we'll work through some of those particulars. On that, again, the Countrywide Sanitation proposal did not fulfill the commitment of the, the proposal. They did have an alternative strategy of having kind of one large site that would be gated, and that would be an alternative strategy, I mean, we, we may want to look at in the future, but that wasn't something we proposed on. So again, what we're asking for this evening is that we move forward with the Waste Management proposal with the service levels that are identified in there, subject to further review by city administrative and consultant staff, and then subject to bringing back a final agreement, working with our city attorney's office. That would have a full agreement with all the particulars to include the pricing. So with that, that's kind of a, an overview of that, and we're here for any responses to questions you may have.
Any comments? Mr. Weber?
Mr. Phelan, when was the last time that we, that the council had a vote on, on recycling? Was that seven, eight years ago?
Yeah, we, last time we proposed, we had a, we've been with the existing agreement for seven years, so probably in that 2013, 14 was the last time we really had a, a proposal, a brand-new proposal with some variety of options. Otherwise, from that 13, 14, 15 timeframe, we've been integrated into that existing service level for a while.
So long ago, and yet I remember it so well. How long is this agreement for?
We proposed it under a five-year term or a seven-year term. I think I'd, we'd come back with a five-year term. With all the terms of agreements that we have, number one, we budget annually, so everything we do is annual. We also generally have provided outs in any agreement. I think the last time I recall, maybe in the existing agreement, is either a 60 to 90-day out if we wanted to, you know, get out of the agreement. So we'll have all those particulars in an agreement.
Waste Management, Waste Management would allow us a 60-day out on this agreement?
Yeah, that's in our existing agreement, yeah.
Oh my, okay. I'll move approval. Great, is there a second?
Council President Sandy, before we second that, I think that's part of the, the strategy. Right now, we have this lower-cost opportunity. Now, the cause, the conversation might be different with Waste Management or with a particular vendor. vendor. If we said we wanted to go to fully automated, new trucks, new containers, and we want them to buy it all, I think there'd be a deeper conversation, because suddenly, they're investing in a lot of capital, and you would have... You know, we've got to be a good partner too. But in this vein, we're just continuing on with the existing level.
This is easy for them on a 60-day notice. They pull out of town, and they're done.
Yeah.
Is there a second? Oh, second by Veen. Comment, Mr. Veen?
No, I was just... I'm trying to remember back at... A few years ago, we did talk about actually going to larger containers. In fact, we were looking at larger recycling and maybe smaller, if I remember, regular waste, because you find today, so much of your waste is recyclable with what we're going to do, and I think I recall the vote. I wasn't here for that particular vote, and it went a little bit different direction, but this really maintains what we've been doing, right?
It does. Council President Sandy and Council Member Veen, that is true. We had that conversation, you know, seven years ago. Our former mayor broke the tie and said he wanted to stay with the current system. He thought that was good enough at the time, and so that's why we have what we have. And I think with the prices that are bid here, I don't see a need that we would shift right now with that. And it seems like from the survey, people were probably past the cost threshold that people are willing to accept.
And I was for the larger container, but I'm happy to continue doing what we're doing. I think it's relatively cheap for what we're doing.
I was anticipating a significant escalation in cost, so I think this is fantastic. Even I, the guy that... I do recycle.
You do.
I do. Even I was not prepared for this, so I'm very, very happy with ultimately the results that we got. Mr. Phelan, I do have a quick question. The calculation you referred to of the diversion of goods from the landfill, how is that calculated?
We add the recycling that we do for Grand Forks plus the other diversion activities, and we just take what the City of Grand Forks produces and exclude materials that come from outside of the city. So, we're just counting what we do, the City of Grand Forks. I think we even exclude what UND, because they have their own program where they're diverting. So, trying to refine about what we're doing, diverting as our community.
Sure.
Otherwise, if we just kind of did some division with the whole amount, ours would be less, but our... A lot of communities are bringing materials to us throughout the region, but they're diverting a lot before even reaching Grand Forks' landfill.
Mr. Weber?
Yeah. Is there any change for apartment dwellers in this current plan? Is it any easier for the... I know a number of people who live in apartments who are frustrated that they can't recycle. They can by going to the various drop-off sites, but there isn't an onsite place because the landlords, for whatever reason, decide to not opt into this.
Yeah.
Has that changed at all?
I think it's a similar way that we're going to do it. We can certainly encourage other apartment owners to do that. We do have challenges with contamination at apartment sites, because, you know, humans are humans, and so we've had some challenges. We certainly can encourage more. We've gone to like, instead of having multiple side-load containers, we've gone to, you know, larger front-load containers, but... And then they get... End up with trash in them. I mean, our curb side is very clean recyclables. Our sites are probably less so, and probably even worse are the apartments, you know, from a matter of being contaminated.
It's hard to recycle an 18-year-old couch, unfortunately. Ms. Mock?
So, Mr. Phelan, essentially, what we're saying is you wouldn't see a change on any city bills. If you were just a single-family home, satisfied with recycling, we see no change. Is that correct?
Council President Sandy and Council Member Mock, yeah, it would be no change. This would be city-wide, we're all going to pay for it. You're going to pay for it through your utility bill. It'd be embedded in your solid waste fee that's on your utility bill, and everyone will have the opportunity to participate, whether it's on a drop site or at a curb side. We'll make it available, similar to what people do today. And with that exception, maybe there's some folks that have larger containers that are meant for more of a side-load operation, not for a human to pick it up and put it into a truck.
And I imagine... So, if somebody still wanted a recycling container from the city, do they call the city and talk to Waste Management? Do they say...
I think they could.
Use whatever you want, or can they get one from the city?
Sure. It's probably best to, number one, you can do city-provided, or you can go out and get your own. And we probably need to do a better job, you know, Greta and I were speaking of this, maybe putting some better visuals on our website and marketing information about, these are the kind of containers, if you're going to go out and get one, would be best. Don't go out and get a 90-gallon solid waste container that, you know, none of us really want to lift one after another. So, we'll provide some better information about, these are the kind of containers, if you're going to go out, get one, to go get one.
And when you do that, it might be a good idea to... I don't know if it's just a fact sheet or remind people to rinse out or leave the cap on milk containers or not bother with yogurt containers, or, you know, like some of those tips and tricks. I think people sometimes just throw it in there, thinking it's better than not.
I think, as I spoke, Greta and I had spoken, maybe doing some better marketing about what you can... Again, we're all humans, you know, we can do a lot of things to inform people, but we probably can do a better job to inform people about what you can and cannot do.
Mr. Weber?
It's not a scientific measure, but the lack of attendance on this issue tonight would seem to suggest a degree of satisfaction with the current service. We'll see if that changes next week, but...
Yeah. I think, hey, we're out of this pandemic, and this is a fundamental service, and I didn't think we would be... You know, this is one area, if you've been here over the last 15 years or 20 years, it's always created a lot of angst, but so now it's... I think we're at the right spot. But I wanted to say, it's not like we can't go to the next level if we want to, but I don't think right now is the time to do it.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none?
Real quick, President Sandy, thank you. I just wanted to also give a thanks to a lot of the people in the room here. At the end of the day, you know, this proposal and going through all this work got, you know, Waste Management had to compete for this, and they probably sharpened their pencils a little bit, and, you know, got a good deal for the city, which is great, and in the end, it's a fair deal. But all the people sitting here, most of them had something to do with this project and putting this together, and I think it was really well-done from start to finish. So, just wanted to say thank you to everybody. Thanks.
Yeah, awesome. Very good survey. I was one of the people that was called, and I agreed that our recycling and our garbage service are excellent. Yes, Mr. Phelan?
I would like to commend you, because I've always been concerned about surveys when people volunteer for surveys. The fact you did scientific surveys gives me a lot of credibility to the information that we have, because so many other areas we do... I'm part of it on MPO, we do a survey, we get this information. Without it being scientific, it's really hard to know if you're just talking to the choir or whatever you're trying to do. So, having this type of information has been extremely helpful.
Agreed. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Weber, second by Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries for adjourn. Thank you.